All right, everybody. Welcome to the March 2nd, 2021 E-Web Board Meeting. We are calling the meeting to order and we will start with an agenda check. So if you don't know, we can start with Sonia. Anything that you would like to, or I guess anybody, does anybody have anything that they would like to change or comment on the agenda?
Nope.
Okay. Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot. As I said, I'm a little fuzzy today, so, okay. All right, so if there's nothing to change on the agenda, then we will go on to number two, items from board members and the general manager. So Sonia, I'm going to start with you.
Also, nothing to add. Make it short and sweet.
Great. John Borowski.
Nothing really to add. I just want to say thank you to Mindy for putting together the little work session, or whatever we were calling it, that we had last week. I thought that was very informative and helpful, and I wish I had some PETA and other things with me tonight, but I don't. But thank you again for that.
You're welcome. John Brown.
Well, thank you, and I'd like to echo John B.'s sentiments about the appropriateness of what you did. I don't know if you had PETA or not, John. I totally had a great big ribeye and a steak and a baked potato and all that stuff. I don't, maybe they just got the wrong delivery at your place, so I'll get there. The only thing I have is maybe as asking Frank for maybe a reminder, a refresher, especially to our new commissioners, about where we sit in the liability issue and everything else, because I know the board members of Pacific Gas and everything have all been named in lawsuits for the fires down in California, and they're going after individual board members and things. And could you maybe give us, at least me, a refresher, and if the other board members want to see it, about what our liabilities are, what our coverages are, our legal defense, if we have claims made, you know, when we go off the board, if something happens now, are we still liable three years from now? Could you kind of give us a summary of that, just because it seems to be the thing that some board members are getting blamed for, things that are, you know, may or may not be in their control?
Yeah, Commissioner Brown, I can certainly follow up and do that. I did ask legal counsel about three months ago for an update as to board member and executive liabilities associated with actions of the utility, and so I have that information and it's fresh, and I'll share that with the board.
Thank you.
All right, Matt, anything that you would like to mention?
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right, and my only thing is that a couple weeks ago, Matt, Frank and I met with the City of Eugene for our quarterly kind of check-in, is what it's become now, and I don't really have anything to report back from that, but that meeting just happened and we continue to build that relationship. Frank?
Yeah, Mindy, were you going to actually mention the incident on the Leeburg Canal? Go ahead and do that. And I did not have anything to add. I'll be talking plenty later about the state of the utility, and so I don't have anything to add at this point, but I knew you wanted to add that.
Yes, so, thank you for that reminder. So one thing that I wanted to do tonight was to call out some, one of our employees, and oftentimes we talk about how our employees go above and beyond, and usually it's in like the case of a storm or something like that. But we had an incident recently where there were a couple of women who were going for a walk along the Walterville Canal, and they, one of their dogs fell in, and one of our employees, Donnie, whose last name is escaping me right now because I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, it's McGlasson.
Donnie McGlasson was called over by a passerby. They needed emergency help, and because of his quick thinking and his resourcefulness, he was able to pull them out, save them and their dog from the canal, and could have been a much worse situation. And so we just want to appreciate our, we want to appreciate Donnie and his quick thinking and what a wonderful employee he was, or he is, and his heroic actions.
I did tease Donnie a little bit, President Schlossberg, because he saved the dog first before the women, but apparently it was pretty much a package deal, so all safe and sound thanks to Donnie's actions and very proud of him.
Yes, thank you, Donnie. Okay, so, um, we are moving right along, and we are at Agenda Item Number Three, Public Input. And I know that we have some of our speakers here, I'm not sure if everybody's here yet. When your name is called, remember to unmute your call. Press star six if you're calling from a landline, or simply use the unmute button if calling from your cellphone. Please state your name and optionally your address or ward and speak clearly into the telephone. Each speaker will be offered three minutes to present their testimony. Please keep track of time. You'll hear an audio notification when three minutes has elapsed, or if that audio notification doesn't happen, I'll just kind of jump in. After all testimony is heard, each commissioner will have an opportunity to speak if they choose, although by policy, we do not engage in a back-and-forth dialogue. Please note that failure of a commissioner to speak shall not be construed as support of or opposition to any speaker's testimony. If a question is presented by a speaker and the board does not provide an answer, an E-Web staff member will contact the speaker so that the question can be addressed at a later time. So the public testimony period of this meeting is now open, and, hang on, to who we have first, sorry, I lost that thread. So first up, we have David Howson. Hopefully I present, I pronounced your name right, you just talked about how to pronounce it. And next up, Stephen Anderson, I'm not sure if he's here yet.
Hello, my name is David Howson. I live on Glen Oak Drive in South Eugene, 3570 Glen Oak Drive, I'm part of Ward Two. My wife Pamela Wright, Pamela Wright, and I have lived in the US service area on and off since the mid-'70s, in Ward Two, in Ward 2909. I, we have really three points, real quickly. One is we support the primary objective of this state's municipal water storage at Fort Worth and Hilliard. We know that, you know, that's a vital thing for the community at large. Two, we're pleased to hear that there is some engagement, you know, by the utility with local partners in possible restoration of some habitat there, the oak, pine, savanna habitat that primarily occupies that hillside. And I probably won't have time in my three minutes, but I have a third point that has to do with the elevation 607 and what I think might be the best kept, one of the better kept secrets in Eugene, and possibly an overlooked opportunity for the board. On the second point, oak pine habitat. Together with our neighbors and the City of Eugene, we've maintained a small rented patch of habitat in our little pocket park here called Glen Oak Park. And to do that, that means we've eliminated duck firs from overtopping the ponderoses and the oak habitat, mostly by turning them into snags. In our yard alone, in 2003 and '04, we turned seven duck firs into snags, including two with greater than 70-inch DBH. In the 15 or more years since then, we've seen those snags and the surrounding habitat provide great nesting and foraging for flickers and sapsuckers and nuthatches and chickadees and western gray squirrels, the native gray squirrels, a host of migrant species. And in recent years, western screech hells, red shoulder hawk and a cooper soft nested in the area, and in December, we had a gray fox come through here, and just last month, we had an Aaron Figney nuthatch that somehow wound up here instead of over by sisters. On the ground or under story, there's wild camas, fawn lilies and wild organ grape and that kind of habitat. But when we look out from our little patch on this hillside, we see the 40th and Hilliard Hill over there, we see the west side of Tubman Park as other places where some of those habitat exists. I'm sure there's more places in the, this part of town, but if we look closely at any of those, nearly, nearly all, nearly all of them or all of them are being, in some phase, are being overtopped by duck fur trees. And so to wrap, what I would-
I just want to interrupt really quickly, your three minutes is up, so if you want to-
Okay. So my final point, we believe that no patch is too small, you know, and when it comes to doing something for this habitat, you know, we would like to see a place like Fort Worth and Hilliard be a keystone for restoring some of that in this part of South Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure if Stephen Anderson is here, followed by Sandra Bishop.
I'm here.
Oh, great. Okay, so ahead, you're up.
Yes, my concern is what it's been almost from the beginning, which is that I hate to see E-Web even considering cutting 260 trees for a single tank in this first go-round for a variety of reasons, one of which is that I don't think that the surveys you've done are truly honest, and by that I mean, you could have asked from the beginning, which is the most important, whether we impact neighbors or put the tanks where they do the least impact? And so if Tank One is on Site Two, it's going to mean many fewer trees cut, that's first off, and secondly, much less excavation, because it's a bit of a lower site, so there's not going to be as much excavation to get the same result that will happen on Site One. Also, Site One is right on top of my neighbor, which I think is inexcusable on a site this big. When the tank will not be built, if they cut all the trees for both tanks, the second tank won't be built for a decade, and we need those trees. We just had an article in The Guard about the overstory of Eugene. The longer those trees can stay put, the better for everything, its habitat, its quality of life in this area. And I don't, I don't know if you've communicated to the neighbors, but friends of mine who are engineers got to looking at how many dump truck loads it's going to take to excavate Site One as opposed to Site Two, and it's probably 1,000 more truckloads on Site One. So we hate to see that not even mentioned anywhere in this, and we think that a positive step was planting the trees on the slope. I do hope that you factored in some way to water them, because this is an unforgiving climate up here, which is why those, those trees are actually fairly small compared to where they would be anywhere else in the Willamette Valley. The other thing is, you've been harping on oak savanna, and I want to reiterate, those wolf trees, the big pines and firs are part of oak savanna. They always have been on these hilltops in the Willamette Valley. Any forester with a knowledge of history can confirm that. So that's where we are. We want you to cut 100 trees and put Tank One on Site Two. It makes the most sense for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next we have Sandra Bishop, followed by Jim New.
Hello, this is Sandra. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hold on just a second, I've got some headgear here. So my address is 4096 Hilliard Street, and I also am here to talk about the 40th and Patterson Hill Water Tank Project. It's been really interesting to try to wrap my mind around why there's such a push to clear-cut and completely clear all of the forested area on the eastern end, and yes, our house is at this end, but I would not be speaking to the board if it weren't a mature, old-growth forest grove that we're talking about here. So I would really appreciate if the commissioners would look at the sequestration of carbon, what is locked up in this standing old growth on the site? And there seems to be, almost like it's being run as a PR campaign rather than a major capital project, there, how can E-Web make progress in reducing greenhouse gas emissions when you're not even talking about the opportunities on a site like this? You could be trading on the carbon credits value of this, of the mature firm pines on this site. And when, when it first came up, why would, why would you need to clear the site for two tanks when you're only going to build one? The first response was, well, we need it for parking, which was rather a kind of off-the-cuff response, which is not true, there's a, there's the meadow with, that's going to be restored later with native grasses, but it does not have native grasses now. So there's plenty of parking, that's not really an issue here, but what's really important is that E-Web honors its duty to safeguard the environment and preserve as much of this forested area on this site as possible, along with providing adequate water storage facilities. And I would just say, please be honest about it. Nobody is talking about specifics, but please be honest about what the engineers are proposing to do to, quote, "prepare" this site. Why is news going out, just recently, there was a Register of Guard article about planting trees on the south side of the hill, which is wonderful, but why is the news going out and it's not being corrected when it said that two water tanks are to be built? There's only one tank to be constructed now, so why is that not made clear? Technically, yes, two tanks, because you're talking about building one 10 years down the road, but be honest about it, you're not going to build two tanks now, and please don't use that as an excuse to clear-cut the heart out of this forest grove when, and then later come back and say, oh, oh, we changed our mind, we don't have the money in the budget to build two tanks. I sincerely doubt that there is enough money in the budget to construct two tanks right now, so just really appreciate having more specifics. How many trees are you talking about? We've had foresters go up there and we've counted the trees, you know, we, we have some idea, but you are the experts, you know, you have all of that, that information. Why are you not talking about how many trees, what are the varieties, what are the age-
Sorry to interrupt you, Sandra, it's just, your three minutes is up, so if you just want to wrap up-
Let me wrap up quickly, but yeah, so as many specifics as possible, please don't let engineering decisions destroy your legacy as our elected officials, who we have put in there to really help us with climate protection, so thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have Jim New, followed by Dylan Plummer.
Good evening, E-Web Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you. We're all muted.
Thank you for the, I'm sorry, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jim New, I live in Ward Seven, and thank you Chair Schlossberg for mentioning that you had the meeting with the City of Eugene. This is the intent of my testimony, actually. After the recent weather-related power outages in the nation's midsection, the current administration's National Climate Advisor Gina McCarthy stated, and I quote, "The US needs systems of energy that are reliable and resilient. We need to work together as much as possible," unquote. Fortunately, in the Pacific Northwest, we have a high percentage of renewable energy, predominantly hydro, but it is not reliable and resilient. The Oregon State University Climate Impacts Research Consortium was quoted in the City of Eugene Climate Action Plan 2.0 that by 2050, the Cascades will have no snowpack. A lack of generation service from the Leeburg-Walterville facilities equates to a loss of 9 to 13 megawatts. A more diversified energy portfolio would make our sourcing more resilient. On Friday, the County Climate Advisory Committee prioritized 100% renewable energy sourcing with a diversified portfolio of green energy development. They discussed recommending Lane County Board of Commissioners arrange a meeting with all the utilities in Lane County to discuss getting to 100% renewable energy and zero emissions. Communication between the city, county, and the utilities is necessary to incorporate locally sourced diversified energy. A significant percentage come from local commercial, residential, and community solar generation and green hydrogen storage to provide resiliency when weather events inhibit BPA-sourced energy. A recent study shows Oregon could produce 1,000% of its current statewide electricity consumption from offshore wind, according to the Institute for Local Self-Reliance. We have a short eight years to increase energy diversity and resiliency. Folks in Texas can attest to what can happen in the blink of an eye. I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. Next up, Dylan Plummer, and then we have James Porter, and his public testimony will be read by Joe Harwood.
Hello, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for providing this opportunity for public testimony and for your service to our city. My name is Dylan Plummer, and I'm the Grassroots Organizer with Cascadia Wildlands, a regional environmental 501(c)(3) organization. I'm also a resident of Ward Two and a board member of the Amazon Neighborhood Association. I'm testifying tonight on behalf of Cascadia Wildlands and the Fossil Free Eugene Coalition, an alliance of economic, environmental, and social justice organizations, fighting to protect the public health and safety of our city and our climate from polluting fossil fuels. As you may be aware, our coalition has been organizing at city level to advocate for climate action, a ban on the construction of new frac gas infrastructure, and just broadly to push the city to be accountable to its 2016 Climate Recovery, or CRO, goals, Climate Recovery Ordinance goals. As the climate crisis worsens, our coalition believes it is of utmost importance for E-Web to take measures to completely eliminate polluting fossil fuels from its energy portfolio and to lead in our city's efforts to create a just transition to clean renewable energy. We expect that with the bold leadership of the Commission, our city will meet the goals of its Climate Recovery Ordinance and transition to 100% renewable energy by the year 2030 in our buildings, both residential and commercial, and all of our electricity sourcing. To do this, we need the Commission's commitment to meeting our city's energy needs with clean renewable energy as soon as possible through investments in local renewable generation projects constructed and operated with well-paid union employees. Fortunately, there have been exciting prospects for a major shift to clean and abundant renewable energy, such as those mentioned by Jim New earlier. And studies have shown that renewable generation projects can provide invaluable stimulus to local economies and job markets, stimulus that Eugene desperately needs. Clean energy and energy-efficient technologies are growing fast and getting cheaper, making them more accessible, but to realize this latent potential, we need the leadership of elected officials like yourself, implement these new technologies, and help curb the impacts of the climate crisis on our community, particularly those most vulnerable. The Fossil Free Eugene Coalition is dedicated to the framework of a just transition, and when making the move away from fossil fuels, we believe it is imperative to center the historically marginalized communities and workers that are the front line for this crisis. Black, indigenous, and people of color communities in Eugene deserve clean air and water in and outside of their homes. Low-income households and renters deserve to have access to renewable, climate-safe energies. Workers and industries that will be impacted by the transition deserve good-paying union jobs in the emerging green economy. As such, our coalition requests that the E-Web Commission pass a resolution that lays out clear goals in support of a more equitable and fossil-free Eugene. Specifically, we hope that the Commission will voice its support to reach 100% renewable energy in its portfolio by 2030, increase energy generation to levels to comfortably replace the current energy use of frac gas on our grid, and invest in local, union-built and operated renewable energy generation projects to fuel a just transition away from fossil fuels. Our city and its publicly-owned utility have a historic opportunity to lead the efforts to address the climate crisis. I hope that the commissioners on this board will choose to support the bold climate action that our city and our planet so desperately needs and that is widely supported by its residents. Thank you so much for your time and for your service.
Thank you, Dylan. All right, last up, James Porter has a statement that's going to be read by Joe Harwood.
James Porter, he did not provide an address or a ward, he is an E-Web customer, and this is in regard to the East 40th Avenue Water Storage Project. Put the first tank in the center of the property rather than on the east end to save the biggest portion of large trees. That's it.
All right, very much to the point. Okay, so that is all of our public testimony, public input, people, that's everyone that signed up, so the public testimony period for this meeting is now closed, and now Commissioners have an opportunity to comment if they so choose. So I don't know if someone wants to raise their hand to go first, or just want me to, I don't like to call on people randomly, it kind of puts you on the spot. So Sonia, I think I see your hand kind of going up, so go ahead.
Well, appreciate the testimony tonight, as always. I would like to hear, I know that we are meeting tomorrow to go through some more of the, the work on the 40th site, so I think many of my questions that come out of this will be answered tomorrow, hopefully, but, I mean, my understanding was that engineering is still working on it, that there, there is a design, there's a number of different designs and potential proposals that they've still been reviewing, so my understanding is that part of, part of the reason that they haven't, you know, given a clear path is that they're still working on it. So, you know, if Frank or others could confirm that, I would greatly appreciate it. Jim, always a pleasure to hear from you and get your feedback on resiliency and climate change issues. I, I, too, think that there, and others who brought up the climate change issues, Jim is just in my ward, so I've heard from him a number of times, anyway, absolutely focused on that. I know that we have a number of big contracts that are coming up, particularly around BPA in 2028, because that is, both BPA and then on the market purchases, market purchases are particularly where we get most of our climate impact, because the resources that we own directly are more renewable resources, so, you know, obviously, we have been in, well, not obviously, but we have been in conversations about, you know, how do we eke out that last, what, like 10% and under of, that is really, has more of a climate change impact or a carbon impact of sorts? And that last little bit is, is a big push, because it's typically market purchases where we get that, so, anyway, I look forward to continuing that conversation, it's always something that we've been focused on as far as the time that I've been on the board, so we'll continue to do that. Thank you.
Great, are there any other Commissioners that would like to comment at this time? You can just raise your hand, I can see you. Go ahead, Matt.
Just on the water tanks, echoing Sonia's comments that looking, we are looking forward to learning, I, I'll speak for myself, I'm looking forward to learning more about that project tomorrow. We have some time with staff to learn more about it, so hopefully we can get a better sense of the issues that are being brought up and how the, the engineering team is approaching those, so I'm looking forward to having that soon. On the other end, in terms of climate action, I agree with Jim and Dylan that there is an opportunity here, and I think, I think that we'll, we'll be having conversations about exactly that over the next several months. I think, I think the, the board will be taking steps that will chart a path towards getting us, our community closer to a target of being off, off of fossil fuels, so thank you for your comments.
All right, anybody else have a comment on that? Frank, I see you raising your hand. Frank, I see you raising your hand.
Yes, thanks Commissioners. I always appreciate the public testimony, even though there's times when I disagree with portions of it. I think our staff has been incredibly transparent with the neighbors up around East 40th, and there are some design elements that we are still finalizing. We just received the ecological report, and we're going through that. We're trying to finalize tank placements for both Tank One and Tank Two. And to be real honest, I have asked staff to evaluate whether it makes more sense, if we're going to need both tanks, whether we have two large disruptions, or whether we just do it all at the same time. And I have asked them to put together that assessment, looking at the benefits of having to do it once or twice, and understanding that there's benefits and there's drawbacks. So I've asked staff to look at both of those, and we'll be discussing that with the board. So we are trying to be as environmentally conscious as we can in that, but we also have to make sure that we're providing the best water services that we can to the community. As for the comments on renewable energy, I actually look forward to one of these meetings. I'd like to give the board, maybe it's a work session, a little bit of overview of where I see renewables in the Northwest and in the Western region. I think that it would be prudent, although most of the resource decisions that need to be made by EWEB are beyond the tenure of this board, I think that there are some principles of which we would discuss regarding the future of those resources. And so look forward to that. I don't think it's as simple as all renewables by 2030. I think renewables mean different things, as does the term fuel or fossil fuels. And so I think it's, there's a lot of trade-offs with reliability, there's a lot of trade-offs with affordability. We are the only organization that is chartered with being safe, reliable, affordable, and environmentally responsible, and we take all of those things very seriously. So I look forward to working with the board on that and developing a set of principles.
Thanks, Frank. All right. John or John, anybody else have anything to say? Okay. Well, I just want to thank everybody for their public testimony. I know that, I think I've said this before, but this format is not very easy, especially when you're talking and you can't really see us. So I appreciate that people are showing up for it. And now we are going to move on to Board Action Item Number Four, which is Approval of Consent Calendar A.
I'd like to pull Number Two just for a question.
Okay. John Borowski, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I have a question about that one as well.
Okay. So do we talk about that one now, or do we approve the rest and then talk about that?
I'll move to approve the rest.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. And so now we talk about Item Two.
Yeah. My question was just about, it's a 42-inch transmission made through the university's Riverfront property. So when it says extension, that, you know, I think, capacity, and why would we pay for that if STC fees are designed for capacity expansions?
Yeah, Commissioner Brown, I can't tell you the specific question about the payment. Anyway, this is the part of our transmission between, so there's two pipes that come across, so it's part of our transmission resiliency project, so we can swap between the two sources that come across the river. And so we're expanding the transmission system for the resiliency and alternate ability to feed from several ends, so we can expand the ability to use the new reservoirs and some of those things. So is that kind of the answer or the question?
I was gonna jump in just for a second. John, I would answer your question by saying this is more of a resiliency project as opposed to a capacity project.
That's all I need to hear.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you.
While we're here. Thank you.
John Borowski, did you have a different question about that?
Well, I guess I was confused as to what Item Number One or Number Two was. My question was on the Northwest Youth Corps contract.
So that's coming next.
Okay.
That's Consent Calendar B.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So did that clear up what you needed, John Brown?
Yeah, and I'll move to adopt Item Number Two on Consent Calendar A.
Sonia, seconds.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Great. All right. Item Number Five, Approval of Consent Calendar B. So John Borowski, this is where you would pull that one.
I move to pull the Northwest Youth Corps contract.
All right. Okay. And the resolutions are part of, no, they're not part of the consent calendar. Okay. So.
I have the remainder of Consent Calendar B, absent Item Number Three.
There a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. John, what is your question about the Northwest Youth Corps?
I guess my only question on that was, I know that we're having Northwest Youth Corps do a bunch of work upriver on the recovery. Would that be a separate contract that we would probably see forward, or is that getting rolled in? Because it seems like this one is just an ongoing vegetation one, and I know that they're doing a lot of good work for us on the stream corridor restoration.
Rod, would you like me to take that one?
Yeah, please, thank you.
Okay. So we've had a long-term relationship with the Northwest Youth Corps, and we do have an ongoing as-needed contract with them. This contract that we've negotiated includes both that ongoing as-needed work plus the restoration work upriver.
And we feel that the same amount of funding is going to be adequate as in years past?
So I believe I'd have to go back and double-check the numbers, but I believe that we did increase it to cover the additional work.
Okay, great, thank you. I just wanted to make, I know they're doing good work up there, and I just wanted to make sure that there was enough funding then. Thank you.
Yep.
So I move to approve Number Three.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Great. Moving right along to Board Item Number Seven, which is Resolution Number 2105, the Water O&amp;M Budget Amendment Fee, and Resolution Number 2106, the Watershed Recovery Fee. And I believe that's Deborah Hart.
Good evening, President Slossberg and Commissioners. We are here this evening with a Water O&amp;M Budget Amendment and Watershed Recovery Fee presentation. I've done a lot of talking over the last few months, so I'm actually going to hand it off to Adam Ru and Ben Satchdeva.
Thank you, Deborah. Go to the next slide. So this table is a summary of the cost for the watershed restoration actions identified in the February Board Memo and Discussion at that time. The 2021 column that's highlighted reflects the budget amendment being proposed for this year, and we're requesting approval of that today. The details of the spending actions can be found in the February memo, and it's my understanding that Carl's available if there's more detailed questions about those actions. So the board has made significant efforts in recent years to maintain affordable rates to provide headroom to make these investments in watershed restoration. These affordability efforts include cost control, budget monitoring, and debt restructuring, strategic use of reserves to pay down debt and other obligations, and this allowed us to maintain low rates for our customers. We continue to monitor affordability and review our bills as compared to median household income and comparable utilities in the region, and this fee maintains our position among the utilities, as you'll see in a chart coming next. The proposed fee covers the risk and resiliency measures on the chart. Should the board decide to pursue the strategic measures, we'll look to other funding sources such as reserves, green bonds, and partnerships with others in the region. I'll now turn it over to Ben, to our Senior Financial Analyst, Ben Satchdeva, to discuss the structure and impact of the fee. This is Ben's first time presenting to the EWEB Board, and he came to us from the Finance Department of the City of Aspen, Colorado. He's a COVID hire and has joined us in the last year and has been a great addition to the team, so I'll turn it over to Ben.
Thank you, Adam, and good evening Commissioners. So to, in order to fund the operating costs associated with the risk and resiliency work from the previous slide, we are proposing a watershed recovery fee. This table outlines the proposed fee that would be applicable to all EWEB retail customers. The proposed fee scales up by meter size to account for potential higher usage. The intention is to blend principles of basic and volumetric rate-making in the proposed fee. Watershed recovery costs will be applied to wholesale customers based on their individual contracts. Details are still being discussed and will be brought to the board for approval when finalized. The proposed fee will be temporary, in place for five years from the month it goes into effect, at which point it will sunset without further board action. This will allow EWEB time to recover the annualized costs incurred over the five years of the plan, which is $2.4 million per year from EWEB retail and wholesale customers, for a total of $12 million. Based on board direction, the 10-year financial plan will include funding for the additional strategic work of $17 million through a combination of reserves and potential green bond issuances. Next slide, please. So this graph shows the impact to our typical residential customer. As you can see, we maintain our position relative to our comparators in terms of affordability with the proposed watershed recovery fee included. As Adam mentioned, the water utilities focus has been on affordability over the past several years, which is how we've managed to maintain our position on the low end of this graph. Next slide, please. Oh, one thing to note on the previous slide, apologies. 95% of our residential customers are in the 1-inch or below class, and thus would see a $3 increase to their bill per month. All right, next slide. This is the same case for commercial customers. 65% of general service customers are on a 1-inch or smaller meter, and 95% of general service customers are on a 2-inch or smaller meter. So with that, I'll pass it back to Adam.
Thank you, Ben. Yeah. So we're requesting approval of Resolution 2105 and 2106 to approve budget to spend on watershed restoration activities and a fee to fund these expenditures. So the last slide for questions or comments.
All right. Looks like John Brown's hand up right away. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And welcome, Benjamin. Good presentation, thank you. Just a couple of questions about equitability. I know that you said the wholesale people are going to get it later, but, so we supply to City of Anita, River Road Water District, and all these other water districts, Willamette Water Company, a private company, and they've got thousands and thousands of customers. And, you know, I can handle the three bucks a month, but I want to make sure it's fair, that if I have 20,000 people in River Road, or if I have 5,000 in Anita, are they all going to pay the same per household, or are we just going to charge Anita or River Road Water District or Willamette Water District? How are we going to make sure that this is fair and equitable, that everybody that's benefiting from this effort is paying for it?
Thanks, that's a good question, and it's been a topic of a lot of conversation internally. We have specific contracts with those wholesale customers, so we've been going through the contracts and working with the partners as well. The water districts, for example, are looking to kind of mimic our surcharge of the $3 per residential customer at the one end, and so neighbors that might be having different water providers see the same thing on their bill to kind of make sure that it's equitable in that way. But in terms of our cost allocation, we do, you know, have a cost-of-service methodology that is currently in place under our contracts to make sure that we recover equitably the costs of this for all of the contract customers. So we're kind of working with them to make sure that it's equitable for customers that are neighbors and looking at their bills, maybe looking at their bills next to each other, but also making sure that all of the contracts are being allocated their share of the costs. We'll be bringing back any of those things to the board, though before we made adjustments to the rates of those customers, we'll be able to provide feedback at that time as well.
Just as a follow-up, so these revenue projections don't include, if I have another 10,000 or 20,000 customers that would be paying $3 a month because they're River Road, Oakway, Willamette Water, and all those, Anita, these revenue projections don't include that revenue, is that correct? So if they come under the same guidelines that I do or all the Commissioners do, that would substantially increase this revenue, is that correct?
No, actually, we've included the revenue from those, because we have the rights under the contract to pass through the costs of those customers. So whether we do it in the manner, the exact same with the $3 per customer, or if it just goes through as a part of their base rates that they're paying as a water district customer, either way, they're paying their fair share, so we've included that.
Okay, so I'm sorry to be so.
A revenue.
So if River Road Water District has 1,000 retail customers, are we going to get $3,000 a month from River Road Water District in this budget? Is that money from those 1,000 customers at River Road included in this revenue generation?
Correct.
It is.
Yeah.
So we've already budgeted in a retail amount for all our wholesale customers.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
John Borowski, I saw your hand up.
Thank you. So my question is kind of on the other end, it's on the spending side. I know that when I've been involved with task-oriented fees or taxes with other local government agencies and stuff, there's been a tracking mechanism. You know, we're charging you, we're asking you to give us $3 a month to help upriver restoration, and I'm just wondering, is there a mechanism for us to track the results that says this money's going into this fund? This year, we spent, you know, $500,000 on stream corridor. Is there a mechanism in place to do that type of tracking back to the board, i.e. back to our customers, saying this is how the money was spent, and it was spent in the way that we represented it to when we imposed it?
That's a good question, and yes, we do have a tracking mechanism in place, and these funds will only be spent on watershed restoration.
So will that be something that'll come back on a yearly type of a report to us, or how will we see that and track that?
We can report back to the board in whatever way is useful or meaningful, maybe as a part of our quarterly report.
Yeah.
And we can attach it to any information that Carl provides about the work that he is doing.
Yeah. Again, that's just something that I would like to say. I've seen it in other things, you know, at the City of Eugene, we've got a street bond repair committee that looks and they say, yeah, you're supposed to fix this many streets, and here's the streets we fixed. And so, you know, if we're saying, yeah, we're trying, and I think that that goes, shows good faith to our customers, saying, we're charging you this money to rehabilitate our watershed, and we did this and this and this. And I don't think it has to be quarterly, but maybe on an annual basis would be helpful for me.
Commissioner Borowski, I'll just step in and say, a lot of the projects you would see categorized under the quarterly report, but then probably at least an annual reconciliation of, here's the revenue that was generated, and here's the specific allocation of those funds. I think that that seems to be a pretty good mix of activity and accountability and transparency to the community.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sonya.
Two questions, one, well, three, I guess, if you count this, but can you please go back up to the slide that shows the timeline for the funds? Right there, thank you. Okay, so we have, over the course of this, there's a large jump up in 2023. What, what is the strategic portion of this project in 2023 that has this large bump up? And how does a steady, I'm assuming that over the course of it, we have the steady fee, and then we build up the amount, and then it, we have enough built by 2023 to cover it for this project, but I'd like to know a little bit more about what that project, what, why that particular bump there?
So, so Commissioner Carlson, I guess I would, I would weigh in just real quickly and, and say that the fee itself is, is mostly, if not fully, covering risk-based and resiliency work. This year, there's a little bit of strategic. If we get into the, the large strategic, you know, the 10 million, 5 million, that would typically be covered with bonds or some other kind of financing, and it would be very specific, a lot of that might be land acquisition, for example, or other things that would be large chunks of opportunities. But this funding method is really designed for the risk-based and resiliency categories.
Okay, so tonight, if we vote on these resolutions, we're not committing to the other portions of the strategic plan, there will be other feedback and input there?
That's, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, great, because the way it was outlined, it was a little, it was a little unclear to me, sorry about that. And then, just from a process perspective, typically, when we do rate and, and kind of budget changes, we have to have two meetings, two public meetings. Why does this, is it just because it's a fee and not a rate change that we don't have to have two meetings with the same amount of notice?
Yeah, we have a, so the reason that we have the two public hearings is really going back to a PURPA, which is an electric utility legislation that we're conforming with. We notice both water and electric utilities when we do those. We did check with our general counsel just to confirm that there wasn't any other statutory requirements, and got the advice that we were able to move forward on the water utility fee, and this would just be a board preference, and, and the public noticing requirements that we do for board meetings and agenda setting and, and the public comment period is covering any requirements we might have statutory, so.
Okay, is there, is there another precedent for this? Because this would be the first time in my, on my term in the board that we would actually be voting to, to increase fees? And, you know, I just, is that something that, that we typically do in just one meeting? I, I understand the legal, legal says that we can do it, but I guess my question is, should we do it? Should we provide that other feedback for another month to just do our due diligence there and give the community public, proper public feedback if they choose to take it?
Commissioner Carlson, I think that, that maybe the closest, and it was unilateral board action previously when we made the decision to start a fund for the second drinking water source. I don't, I don't recall specifically what the notification was for that, but I know that the board acted unilaterally in creating that fund, and, and so there is precedent for this, and, and there's also some other utilities that have created fees as well, but I don't know what their notification has been.
Okay. Okay. Those are my questions for now, I may have others after others ask.
All right, Matt, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just one quick question, thank you, Commissioner Schlossberg. My question is about low-income households, and I know we already have programs in place to protect low-income households from, you know, from water expenses becoming too, too exorbitant for their income. Can you just remind us what programs we have in place, and then confirm that those will remain in place and will cushion anybody who can't afford this additional fee? Thanks.
So we're currently offering customers who meet the qualifications $260 once a year to their utility bill, so that covers both electric and water. We are working with Customer Solutions to see if there may be an opportunity to potentially offset a portion of this for impacted low-income households.
Yeah, I wonder if those households that qualify for that $260, if we might just waive this additional fee for those particular households?
Typically, we would, I don't know who's talking, Frank, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, typically administratively, Commissioner McCray, it would be more advantageous to keep the fee and provide some extra customer care dollars than it would be to get into situations where you're waiving fees sort of unilaterally or for a specific reason. So it's, it's much more beneficial and, and easier to administrate, and probably more effective in the long run to keep the fee and then provide customer assistance where necessary. And, and we are looking at potentially adding a little bit of a kicker to our $260 for those because, to partially offset this.
Understood, yeah, and the administrative tool exactly isn't as important to me as just us trying to avoid putting people further underwater, swear, no pun intended. But yeah, I would be in support of taking some administrative action to make sure that this isn't added to the bills of people who are already qualifying for support.
Yeah, I, I think, Commissioner, it's fair to say that we could have something in place before this goes effective.
Thanks.
Well, one of the consequences of going last in the queue is that all of your questions get asked, so I did have some questions, and they were already asked and answered. I don't know if people have further questions. Sonya, you kind of indicated that you had some more questions.
I guess I'm, I'm still puzzling over it a little bit. It sounds like, not hearing any other comments from commissioners, that nobody else has concern about holding it in two meetings. I didn't get any head nods there, so I guess I'll withdraw my concern. The, the last question that I had was around, when we've looked at low-income kind of issues before and how it relates to the, the water and electric utility, we've, we've noted that there's some kind of correlations that don't really match up, that, that kind of, we think that they should match up, but then they really don't in that. And, and I'm wondering if the rate, retail fee, if there's any correlation there between kind of the size of the, the meter size and the unit that's being hooked up? I mean, do we have, do we have any sense of whether or not there are, you know, what are the types of homes and such that are actually on these much larger meters? Were there any that were really oversized that are in, you know, areas that may actually be more low-income and that may get a bigger hit than just the $3?
Well, so the, for the residential customers, as Ben mentioned, like 95% of the residential accounts are at the one-inch, so the $3 fee. Larger service typically wouldn't be related so much to the, what's going on inside the house as what might be outside, extensive irrigation, or some kind of, some kind of agricultural use that might be in a residential application. So a one-inch meter should presumably cover that. A lot of apartment or like multi-unit houses, residences would presumably not be individually metered at a higher meter size. If it was individually metered, it would be typically the owner that, or the landlord that would be paying the water bill and, you know, passing it through in rates, but it wouldn't be an individual residential account necessarily seeing that, a larger meter, except for those kind of larger usage that's probably going to be outdoor irrigation.
Okay, so if there's an apartment complex of sorts, typically, that would, if it had a larger meter, obviously, that would be spread among all of the different users at the, you know, maybe at the 10-inch rate, but it's 30 divided by, you know, 30 apartments, maybe, it's not just like 30 per apartment.
Yeah, and those apartments wouldn't be EWEB water customers, the landlord will be the EWEB customer to be paying the fee.
Okay, I just wanted to double-check and make sure that there, you know, weren't, and, and I'm assuming if there are particular situations where somebody is hit, then we can come back and we can, you know, modify as need be if there's, you know, an unattended consequence of this, that, you know, particular people are hindered in a way that they, that wasn't the, you know, the outcome that we intended, so. All right, thank you, that's all the questions I had.
John Borowski.
Thank you. Yeah, so I guess I have a comment and a question. So my comment is, when that, when I saw this on the, on the board agenda and after last month's meeting, I just did, you know, a little survey amongst people that I met, you know, I said, what would your thoughts be on a $3 fee? And I explained to them what it was going for, and almost universally, everybody said, no, I, I think that that's a good thing. I didn't get anybody that said, oh, no, that's a terrible thing. So that's just a little anecdotal thing, because this is the first time, as a commissioner, I've had to deal with any sort of a rate increase or rate issue. So I wanted to do a little bit of due diligence and say, well, customers, what do you think? So with that being said, I'm, I'm in favor of this, definitely. The question that I had was, when I saw the, the packet today, and, and saw, well, it's, if you have a one-inch line, it's this much, if you have a two-inch line, it's this much, I didn't know what size lines I had. So I've got a residential one, I assumed that that was a one-inch line, but then I have a small commercial, you know, building that I pay EWEB at, and I don't know what size line I have at that, and I don't, I don't even know where I would find out what size line I have and how much that's going to be done. So I don't know if we need to do outreach to the community to say, hey, you know, these are the type of people that are going to have more than $3 or not. I don't know if my restaurant's got a two-inch line, if it's got a five-inch line, I don't know these things, and I would have no idea where to look to find that. So I would be, it'd be nice to know how I can find that out.
Yeah, Commissioner Borowski, I think, I think there's going to be plenty of outreach between now and the, the time of implementation, including some of those comments and questions. I, I think what our, what our attempt was, was to balance between creating a fee and also having at least some tie to the volumetric component without directly making it a volumetric rate, which classifies it differently. We will do plenty of outreach, we wanted to wait, and I know this was part of the presentation, until some of our self-service billing changes took place, we didn't want to change everything all at the same time. And so, a lot of, there will be a lot of outreach over the next couple of months to prepare for any kind of fee like this, so. And by the way, I think quite a few of the commissioners have never dealt with a rate increase or a fee increase either, luckily, but I have a feeling that's, that's going to change, so. You're, you're fortunate to join when you did.
All right, Matt or John Brown, do either of you have any other questions?
Ben.
All right, so this is a resolution, it's an action item, so we are needing a motion and a vote.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 2105 and 2106.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, that passed, those, both passed. We are now on agenda item number eight, Advanced Metering Infrastructure Program Background and Update. And I just want to say that Rod, I think you get the award for the best background this month.
Thank you. I, I have to credit Gary Lynch, he's the fleet supervisor, he provided this photograph of Salt Creek, so hats off to him. Well, good evening, and thanks for the photo compliment. For the record, I'm Rod Price, and with me is Simran Khalsa, who is our AMI Strategic Program Manager. We're here tonight to get you updated on the AMI program and talk a bit more about what's coming in the program. I just want to take a quick minute, though, and thank Kelly Curtis and Rachel Chilton for, for helping with the graphics of this presentation and making us look good. I'd also like to thank all the, the many employees that have been involved in this project over the last three years, this is really a big team effort. And I was actually thinking earlier, how am I going to convey, or how, Simran, am I going to convey a project this big in 10, 15 minutes? But here we go, I guess, so next slide, please. Quick agenda check, this is just for information and status only, to give you some context with some of the things we may approach the board with coming up, and, and just to kind of give you an idea where we're at with this project. So I'll do a quick, you know, YMI kind of thing, and, and talk about, do a quick financial overview, and then Simran, who's the, the, been managing the program, will, will give a, an update on the progress we've made today and what's coming up, so. Next slide, please. So the question is, why are we doing AMI? Well, the, the real answer here is that applies directly to our strategic plan, and you're, you're probably familiar with the plan, and, and of course, we'll be talking about it more in some upcoming sessions, but in essence, the, the goal is to drive towards, you know, our integrated sources and, and flexible and resilient water and electric delivery, right? To get to that end goal, we're working on increasing our customer confidence and creating consumption flexibility. Our plan is to update and modernize our technologies and business process to get us to these goals. Modernizing our meeting, metering system is the key tool to achieving the first two stages of the strategic plan. Next slide, please. Do a little history lesson here. Personally, I've been involved with smart meters since 2001, but the, the modern era for EWEB got started around 2013, when the board approved to move forward with an opt-in system. Now, opt-in, which leaves the choice of the meter in the customer hands, is not necessarily the standard deployment method across the industry. With opt-in, we expected to deploy about 30,000 to 40,000 meters. In 2017, the board adopted a more standard method, deployment methodology called opt-out. So we quickly realized that opt-out would be critical to the ability for us to create consumption flexibility. So in the fall of 2017, the board approved the full deployment of approximately 150,000 meters, and the goal was to get those installed by 2025. And then, as we talked about things, and to better understand our loads and improve our electric planning, the board in late 2018 approved an accelerated electric meter deployment with the target of having all customers installed by the end of 2021. So after about 18 months of experience installing smart meters, we slowed down the install process and deployment process in 2020 to lay some of the foundations to scale up both the deployment and the related systems for data and remote reads. Simran will actually cover the, the 2020 work in a little bit more detail here in a bit, but we have realized a number of benefits to date, so. Next slide, please. Just wanted to give you a quick overview of where we're at with finances. When EWEB made the decision to accelerate the full deployment in 2017, our projected budget was around 32 million, and it was based on, mostly on the opt-in model. By 2018, we'd, we'd made the decision to accelerate deployment, we had revised some of the cost estimates to, up to about 36 million. During the 2020 scale-up last year, we took a very detailed look at our final cost projections, you know, and along with the experience we've gained, and all the things we had to do to scale up, and revised the final cost to be around 44 million. Now, that totaled between both Now, that totaled between both water and electric. Much of the additional $8 million in costs or added costs have come from additional meters, the changes to the meters, and then also the contract deployment we're going to employ to make sure we get the electric meters installed by the end of 2021. So I'm going to turn it over to Simret now and she's going to tell you the real good details.
Thank you, Rod. Good evening, commissioners, general manager Lawson, customers and staff. My name is Simret Kalsa, Strategic Program Manager. The focus of the AMI program this past year has been several cross-functional projects, ensuring that the work we do is aligned with E-Web's strategic plan and to move us towards these goals. As you are aware, the four projects under the AMI program are smart meter deployment, AMI facilities, IS improvements, and meter-to-cash process improvements. We've been working to ensure that we understand the critical path dependencies between the projects and execute accordingly. So in 2021, our messaging from 2018 still stands. The bullet points you see before you were shared at that time and are still core to our AMI work. So what does a path to this look like? Next slide, please. Thank you. Over the next couple of years, we will continue to set the groundwork for that future vision. The fundamental work is taking place now with the installation of smart meters, ensuring that our AMI facilities and IS systems are scaled appropriately, and working on operational process improvements driven by these changes. This work is the foundation to developing these products and services and supports the end goals of customer choice and control, enhanced resiliency, and providing the data and information needed for future decision-making. As we get into this year and next, we will look towards what we need to have in place to provide these benefits. Moving along the timeline from tactics to strategy to vision, the data evidence and certainty we have increases over time. Work will continue to identify dependent projects, such as CIS, the CEI, Customer Portal, and possibly more. Slide, please. Thanks. In 2020, despite slowing down deployment, the program was very busy. Just over a year ago, we were able to get together to brainstorm all the places that AMI touches our meter-to-cash processes. That was soon before many of us shifted to working remotely due to the pandemic. Little did we know how things would change. As the year progressed, the AMI program team adjusted our working methods to still proceed, but in new ways, allowing for social distancing and working remotely. I can say that I'm really looking forward to getting back to a new normal, being able to return to the office at some point to work with our great team face-to-face again. With plug and play, we made improvements to our systems to allow for a more streamlined meter installation process. The time it takes field staff to install electric meters is greatly improved with this change. The map that you see in the center is from our RNI system. The radio network interface is the bridge from smart meters to other IS systems. It continuously gathers and processes network data, sending it to our customer information and billing systems. The RNI upgrade gave us a greater level of visibility to our network coverage from each meter on up to overall system health. I have highlighted the coverage of the new facility sites installed recently, Spring Creek in green, Delta in orange, and Crest in blue. We will continue to work with our vendor to tune the network through the year as we deploy meters. We will also start shortly to engage UPA, Utility Partners of America, to make the last push to install single-phase electric meters. All that preparatory work was taking place last year. The primary focus for 2021 is on smart meter installations. To meet this goal, UPA will be here in April. Their scope will be residential, single-phase electric meters. Internal staff will continue to install electric three-phase and some single-phase meters. We've examined the existing policies and recommended changes to be more clear on customer options. To support full deployment, we will continue to build out network facilities this year based on recommendations from the vendor census and what we can see in the upgraded RNI. We have three more sites scoped out for installation and upgrade this year to be ready for full deployment. Another area we're focusing on is improving transition operations. Utilizing change management best practices, the team is identifying how AMI changes, the work that we do, and working with staff on how best to make those changes. We're really trying to be thoughtful and proactive with transitions to ensure a solid future when each project closes out. Learning from past experiences and using continuous improvement and change management practices help us to do better. Managing transitions well ensures a solid future. As each customer is upgraded, they are operational for our four core smart meter services. As deployment scales up, continuous improvement is applied to our delivery of these services. Electric deployment is on track to complete in early 2020. Scaling up deployment efforts with UPA allows us to meet this timeline as opposed to how we might have without their assistance, as shown with the dotted line. Water meter deployment is on a steadier pace with internal staff doing that work. We're on target for completing the end of 2023. We are having ongoing discussions on how best to support internal staff with that effort. As we look on past meter deployment, we can see that completing meter installations allows us to plan for products and services for our customers and the data and information for us to make future decisions. Installing meters is one small part of the whole picture. It really is the beginning and not the end. So that concludes our AMI program update. And with that, I open the floor for questions, comments and discussion. And thank you.
All right, anybody have any questions or anyone want to go first? Go ahead, John.
Thank you. I hate to go first all the time, but I'll try. Just a quick question, Rod. I noticed that on, like in downtown on my block, the meters in my building are, the water meters are smart because I can see the census transponder on the top of the meter. But the ones on the other half of my block have not been changed. I see the manual reader on there. Why would they only do part of a block and not the rest of it if we all pretty much have the same vintage meters and everything in the water?
Ah, boy, that's a detailed, complicated question. But in essence, we, it depends, they plan these out by routes. And so it's almost, I'd have to dig out the particulars of your block.
No, I, it's just wondering if there is, maybe there's not an opt-out on, you know, because the building has smart meters and, but they don't have, they didn't put the water meter census in because you can tell they don't watch them, manually read them now.
Right. No, our opt-out load is, our opt-out level is very low. So it's more like a scheduling thing where they've done it by routes and by programs and those kind of things for efficiencies and meter reading and such.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Brown, I would, I might also add that in the case of water meters, there is a difference between the transponder on the meter box itself and whether there's an actual smart meter in the box. And so, but I think Mr. Price is right. The intent will be to actually schedule these according to route and be efficient. But sometimes there's a little bit of confusion as to the meter box versus the meter inside. And so we might need to verify that for you.
No, they just had the transponders on half of them on the top and they don't have the transponders on the plates on the others. And I just saw them there manually reading them, some of them. I just was wondering why we would do that. But I think you tried to explain it. Thank you.
Any other questions? John Borowski.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the information that was provided in the packet. Gave me a good history lesson on where you've been and where you've come from. Question I had was on the, you know, the financial update. So that was back a few slides and it's, you know, it started off, the project initiation in 2018. Initial scope budget was about $31 million. And then 2019, it was $35 million. And then the current one, we're at $44 million. And I understand that, you know, we made changes and went from opt-in to opt-out and we brought in a contractor to help, you know, get the meters in on time. And I understand that that's how those budgets have swelled. I'm just wondering if you can foresee anything else that may shoot that budget up exponentially like it has been in the past? I mean, we're up $13 million from 2018 to now. So it seems like you've figured out most of the contingency and we're nearing the finish line. But are we going to be looking in 2021, 22 that that $40 million, $44 million is now $50 million? Or have we pretty much gotten most of the heavy lift out of the way?
I'm going to say we got most of the heavy lift out of the way, but I also know that, Simret, there is a few things hanging out there. And so, Simret, you want to take a, since we talked about this, why don't you go ahead and answer it?
Yeah, so we have a couple of project managers that are working on the various projects. And we are doing more detailed projections through to the end of 2023 at this point. So I feel that, you know, I don't foresee any huge unknowns out there. I mean, of course, there's always some unknowns. But I feel like at this point, there's not as many by far as there were, say, even two, three years ago. And one other point I thought I would make is these figures are from 2014 forward. So it wasn't that we just started in 2018 and we've spent all that money since then.
Yeah, thank you. I understood. I understood that with the background of it. And I saw where the increases came, you know, through board actions and well-informed decisions. And I was just, like I said, I just was wondering if there's any, anything that you saw that was like, well, you know, there's one more thing, you know, the smart, the water smart meters, we may not be able to put them in ourselves and we may have to contract those as well. You know, things like that that have come up on the other side. I just wanted to check and see if we're looking for another big hit. That's all I was asking.
Well, I answered that for you.
Commissioner Borowski, I would qualify a little bit to say that I think the biggest variable that we were wrestling with over the last couple of years, when we went from opt-in to opt-out, the scale of which we had to deploy and the scale of which we needed the radio network interface and all of the support systems behind the scene wasn't foreseen under an opt-in approach. And so just that scaling of it was a big driver behind the move from opt-in to opt-out. But it drove a lot of things that maybe when we were in the opt-in mode did not foresee. I'm glad to hear we don't foresee any big things out there. I think there's a sense of urgency on the electric side. The water side doesn't have quite the same sense of urgency when it comes to the need for new products and the integration of renewables, for example. So I can, I'm pretty comfortable with the pace difference between water and electric. And I think you heard it from the project manager and the chief operating officer that they're pretty comfortable with those numbers.
I think one thing too, though, I guess I should throw out a caveat. Upriver is not part of this budget. So that could be a different, a new decision coming up. And it, but it's never been part of the budget to this point.
Yeah, that's correct.
Sonia.
Do you think that it will be then? You're, Rod, you're kind of foreshadowing that there may be a decision that, my understanding before was that the technology itself was limiting. Is there new technology that would make it so that we actually could put these in upriver?
Yeah, yeah, there is some options we're looking at. I mean, we could, there's two or three different options. So it, but I think right now we're really concentrating on the scope at hand, which is to deploy the meters in town.
And Commissioner Carlson, that would be, that would definitely be a separate decision we would bring to the board. If the technology is different because you have now a tree, foresty environment, it might be a different system altogether. But that would definitely be something that would, we would bring to the board as a separate decision.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Matt, do you have any questions?
No questions for me. Thanks. Thanks for the presentation and the materials. Very helpful.
I don't have any questions either. So I think, unless there's anyone else that wants another go-around, I think that we are done with that action or that item. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
All right, so now we are at a break and we are just two minutes early. But why don't we just stay on our schedule and we will break until 7:05. See you all back in seven minutes. All right, I'm not sure if we're all back yet. Give it like 30 more seconds. All right, so just to make sure that we stay on track of time, we're going to get started again. And we are on agenda item number 10, State of the Utility Address and the 2020 Year-End Strategic and Operational Report from Frank.
Well, President Schlossberg, good evening, commissioners. I've actually been looking forward to this, this evening and reporting out the results of the utility as well as the traditional State of the Utility Address, which by tradition has been done by a commissioner. But it made actually a little more sense to have me report out to the condition of the utility to the commissioners. And so that's a little bit of a variant this year. And go ahead with the next slide. As part of the formality, I've recorded this for this portion of it. And then I'll get into a lot more details, supporting details for the results of 2020. So Ann, if you want to go ahead and start it, I'll sit tight and the commissioners can enjoy the State of the Utility Address.
Pump station enhancements and customer building requests. The Water Utility.
Started from the beginning.
Good evening, President Schlossberg, commissioners, employees, and members of the public. I am here to report that the state of your utility is healthy. That word has intentional meaning this year because it reflects the utility's condition in the context of the worldwide pandemic that impacted 2020 and challenged our community. Even when healthy, you can feel good or bad from time to time. But your general condition, a result of your history, diligence, and hard work and good habits, is strong. Eweb is indeed healthy. A pandemic, major wildfire, economic challenges, cyber attacks, along with social and political unrest, tested our community and our utility in 2020. Sadly, people in our community have suffered, struggled to cope, spoken out in anger and frustration, or with empathy and praise, and even died because of the events of this past year. If struggle both builds and reveals character, it did both for Eweb in 2020. As an organization, while these conditions challenged our finances and systems, they mostly tested our people, Eweb's employees and our board. But we were able to respond, and respond we did. This month marks the one-year anniversary of Eweb's first executive stay-at-home order, a situation we fully expected to pass within a few weeks or months. Eweb human resources and safety staff have worked tirelessly with Eweb leadership throughout this past year to make adjustments to policies and procedures, often influenced by changing government regulations or health standards to help our employees and protect our capacity to respond to the needs of our community. Eweb employees have endured and worked under ever-changing conditions and rules, smog and smoke, fires, threats from citizens, and in some cases, at-home conditions impacted by family situations and technology. Despite cyber challenges like the SolarWinds attack in December, Eweb's information services staff provided important support, enabling safer and more flexible working environments, and also managed to upgrade many of our systems, becoming more cloud-based and more resilient in the process. These and other lessons learned in 2020 will continue to provide opportunities for Eweb in the years ahead. And respond, we did. In 2020, not only did Eweb safely and reliably and affordably deliver almost 8 billion gallons of fresh, high-quality, great-tasting drinking water and 2.4 billion kilowatt hours of low-carbon electricity, we also contributed over $18 million directly to the community through customer assistance programs, education grants, water and energy efficiency and electrification incentives, and contributions in lieu of taxes to the cities of Eugene and Springfield. Staff responded quickly to both the COVID economic impacts and the Holiday Farm Fire victims with special assistance qualification adjustments, new payment programs, and in some Holiday Farm Fire situations, bill and loan forgiveness. To ensure the ongoing viability of our services, Eweb made approximately $58 million in capital investments in 2020, including roughly $18 million in water infrastructure and $40 million in electric and shared services systems. These investments were specifically prioritized to reinforce the values of our board and community, safety, reliability, affordability, environmental stewardship, and our strategic objectives focused on emergency preparedness and disaster recovery and preparing for a new energy supply future. Besides the miles of water pipe upgrades, pump station enhancements, and customer building requests, the Water Utility has now fully commissioned five emergency water sites throughout Eugene, two years ahead of schedule, with another two planned in the future. Completed construction of a new water lab building at Hayden Bridge, made significant progress on the design and planning of our new base-level reservoirs with construction on the East 40th site starting this summer, and received the laboratory accreditation to perform in-house cyanotoxin and biological testing. Oh, and there's the watershed, which we have worked with the board to expand our approach from watershed protection to watershed recovery, requiring additional care and investment. Besides replacing poles and conductor, along with responding to customer building and renovation projects, the Electric Utility significantly rebuilt the Mackenzie Valley service territory in a matter of weeks, added an important switching system linking the north and south downtown Eugene underground electric networks, significantly increasing resiliency, and replaced some large key substation transformers in 2020. If 2020 showed us anything, it's the importance of respectful relationships with our colleagues, with our advocates, and with our critics. Eweb continues to build individual and organizational links with Lane County, the cities of Eugene and Springfield, and communities in the Mackenzie Valley, with organizations that share similar visions, like Pure Water Partners and Mackenzie River Trust, with other energy suppliers like Public Utilities and Northwest Natural to decarbonize both the electric and gas grids, members of our community and our neighbors, and with our colleagues and Board of Commissioners. These relationships will continue to be important in the years ahead because although Eweb is healthy, some heavy lifting is still to come. After years of no rate increases, including absorbing increases from our largest energy supplier, the Bonneville Power Administration, Eweb will likely need to raise rates in 2022. But as with your other assets, we will continue to be good stewards of your money and make prudent investments, ensuring the continued delivery of safe and reliable drinking water and electricity. Finally, commissioners, on a personal note, I celebrated my 10-year anniversary working at Eweb in 2020. And I can honestly say I've never been prouder of the organization, including staff, management, and the board. I am excited about the opportunities in front of us and know that we have the ability to fulfill our boards and communities' needs. Thank you to all who continue to contribute to the essential services that we provide, making Eweb a great place to work and for ensuring that our community can indeed rely on us. Thank you, commissioners. And with that, I now look forward to sharing a few additional details regarding the state of your utility and the status of our strategy and organizational goals. Thank you.
So that's the traditional address, I suppose. A lot of the next couple of slides, I won't be too repetitive. There's, there's a number of things on here that were mentioned actually in the address. There's a couple that were not. On this first slide, the picture on the right there is the downtown switch that was mentioned, linking the feeders between the north and the south part of the networks so that multiple substations can be used to feed the downtown core, which is incredibly important in the case of resiliency. U as a board approved $1 million in emergency funding last fall when it came to the watershed. I think that's worth mentioning. And also, when you think about the last bullet there, the customer care and energy share programs, almost $1.8 million delivered directly to customers. That wasn't administrative or overhead coverage. That went to customers, 7,500 recipients. And depending on how many in a household, that's 20,000 people, plus or minus, that we impacted with our customer care programs, really, really significant 2020 result. Go ahead with the next slide. A couple of other things. The picture on the right is the new Eweb water laboratory building approved for occupancy in December. Staffs probably staking out their space in there and working on getting the lab up and running. We did receive a couple of awards also. The American Water Works Association, the Award for Safety went to the Water Utility for, which is a national award. We financed a lot of this through a $90 million bond offering. It was a combination of refinancing and new financing, water and electric. And I did want to at least acknowledge in this process tonight, Commissioners Helgason and Mattel for their work. And also welcome Commissioners Borowski and McCray. I look forward to all the good things that we're going to do over the next several years and during your tenure. Go ahead with the next slide. I wanted to touch briefly on the goals we set out for last year. We had eight organizational goals. Really, in the, in the memo, I mentioned that we fully achieved half of those and partially achieved the other half. There was, there was one, and I'll just, AMI, I'll just start at the top. I felt like managing utility operations was, was a challenge in 2020 for a number of obvious reasons. But I think we really stepped up and showed our character as an organization. The AMI project, you just got an update on, so I won't, I won't belabor that too much. We, I do believe we have set ourselves up for scaling the deployment, which was an important part of the objective last year. The customer, you just got a demo a couple of weeks ago of the improved customer experience. And it's a little bit late, so partially achieved. But that's one we want to be also very careful with, given that it impacts customer bills directly. And so we'll complete that in 2021. The emergency management, I feel, again, we made a lot of good progress on that. Extensive vegetation management, a number of different plans were completed, including a risk assessment on the Water Utility, which you have a correspondence update on tonight, actually. The goal that was a challenge this year for us was working with Springfield Utility Board, specifically on the second opportunities with the second treatment plant. That was reprioritized a little bit because of some real estate opportunities with both Sub and Eweb. But we did make some progress on discussions around how we maintain and test our inner ties. And we're reviewing a new MOU between Sub, Eweb, and Rainbow Water District, which those are ongoing discussions. Completed our electrification report. You recently got at least a partial update, and I would really consider it a partial update on the Lower McKenzie, specifically the Lieberg Canal Assessment, Economic and Technical Assessment. There's a lot more to come on that before we can consider it a really triple bottom-line view. And so there's a lot more work and that's another goal that we have continuing into 2021. And then our climate actions that we were really looking to achieve around carbon reduction. The, the number actually is just slightly short of our 8,500 metric tons, but that did not include EVs since June. And so that will likely surpass that goal. So I considered that one achieved at this, along with a number of the operational components to that. Go ahead with the next slide. I wanted to just present a little bit about trends. I'll talk mostly about things, you know, the colored area are things that affect all, all, both utilities across the organization. The water trends are up above, the electric trends are below. Made significant progress this year on our dam safety program and our relationship with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. That in large part was due to Daniel Huang, who we hired from Seattle, who's really taken that program on. And so, good safety records. Our Good Catch reporting, which is a preemptive type of reporting, was significantly higher than in years past. Cybersecurity continues to do well. Financial management, public communications and outreach, did just a lot of things. Water quality in the midst of forest fires and other challenges continues to be good. On the unfavorable piece, I think generation availability. At one point or another, Carmen Smith, because of the wildfire, was unavailable. We know about the Lieberg Canal. Lieberg was unavailable the entire year. And even our Stone Creek facility up in the Clackamas Valley was unavailable because of, in one case, fire, and then also recently because of ice. So, some challenges on generation availability. We are seeing some financial pressures forecasted on the electric side. Some of those were predicted. If you recall, the long-term financial plan showed some rate increases potentially next year anyway, but we've seen some consumption and retail-level consumption being below historic levels because of economic pressures. So, I mentioned workforce morale. I think that that's one that we're very attentive to. It could actually be workforce and community morale. I think we all feel it. It's been a struggle. Some of it is a little bit of a combination of just routine and burnout and understanding, one situation after another. I think the workforce has done a tremendous job in 2020. It's something that we're mindful of and something that we're paying attention to as an organization. Go ahead with the next slide. This is just a reminder kind of where we are in our strategy. The whole intent of this synchronizing out a little further is to recognize that, and you hear comments about renewables and wanting to move toward renewables, there's a whole challenge that we need to look at and how we're pursuing because of the integration of variable resources with variable consumption, and we need to be able to synchronize those two. And so our strategy is the process of getting there as well as being resilient and being prepared for emergencies and recovery. And so this is kind of where we feel we are. It's pretty close to the timeline. There's a lot of things that are in the work to support that. Final slide, please. This is it. Questions? I'd be happy to entertain questions or comments from the board. Very proud of the work that the board did this last year, although from a board perspective, it was probably a little bit mundane. That will change going forward. A lot of big decisions to make, but overall, incredibly proud of the organization. Were we perfect? Nope. Did we get everything done? No. But the things that we did, we did really well, and we did under some really difficult circumstances. And so, and like I said in the state of the utility address, I couldn't be prouder of the organization than I am right now. So I'd be happy to entertain questions or comments. I went a little bit over on my time. Sorry about that. John Brown will call me out on that, I'm sure.
Go for it.
Okay, keep with tradition and go first. Anyhow, Frank, thank you very much. I think what you said, you know, I've been here for a few years, and we've had a lot of challenges. We've had Snowmageddon, we've had the ice storm and things, and those things are, you know, although they're intense, they're not long-lived like the tragedy we had in Holiday Farm, and that's going to be long-lived. That's going to be decades, and it's not, you know, and so hats off and kudos to you and everybody else for what you've done for everything, but especially protecting that watershed and making sure that we get it back together. I just have a real quick question on some of the financial metrics and things. I still have this question. It's kind of minutia, but I'm just still wondering that schools haven't been in session for quite a while, and we're still spending quite a bit of money on the educational programs. What are they doing if their kids aren't in class and all that money in the past has gone for field trips and things? Where's that money?
Yeah, I know that Janine did some outreach, and Commissioner, we can get back to the entire board with the details of that. I think generally, they have moved into virtual classrooms, virtual salmon watch. There's a number of different things they've done, but we can, it's probably worth a complete correspondence response to that or a general manager's report, just to ensure that that money is being used effectively and what for. So I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you, because I did notice there was another line item that we spent money outside of that budget for a virtual salmon watch, and I'm just wondering if we're diversifying the things, because, you know, that's a great program and things. We don't have the silver challenge and things like that. I just want to make sure that we're using our money properly. So, thank you.
I will double-check that, too, because I know that some of those programs get listed separately, but they're actually part of the conglomerated funding. So we'll get out the decoder ring for the board and so that we can figure out exactly where this is going.
Go ahead, Matt.
Frank, I have a decoder earring here, if you want to borrow mine.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just want to say it's quite an honor to be able to join this board and to see this utility coming through just the craziest of years, just dealing with COVID alone and supporting people who are in a bad spot because of COVID, and then dealing with the wildfires. It's remarkable to me and quite a testament, I think, to the whole team, the ability to stay steady and come out the other end, though we're not quite out the other end, with everything intact. Mind you, recognizing, you know, there were homes lost, and I don't mean to diminish the impacts there, but as a utility coming out, you know, on the other end, intact is really remarkable, in my view. So, kudos, nice work. And my dog, what the heck?
Thanks, Matt. Yeah, thanks, Matt. I really, I really do think that once we got through some of the, it's sort of you wrestle with the realities of your situation, and it started with COVID like that, and, you know, once we got in and recognized this is a long-term challenge, it's still ongoing that you kind of come to a realization that you have to step up. And people generally who work at EWEB, they're there for the right reasons, and that's to, it's a career certainly, but they're there to help their community, and I think that's and feel like they're part of something. And so, I really do feel like the people of EWEB is what really stepped up this year, and they deserve the credit and all the credit for that.
Go ahead, Sonya.
I just wanted to echo that. I mean, such a remarkable job over the last year, just grappling with so many different challenges. And I know that, you know, new frameworks, new policies had to be created on the fly and adjusted frequently for new science, new developments, you know, things that we never thought you'd have to deal with. Just, it's just, it's been remarkable, and even though there's definitely been much human loss and impact, I'm very, very proud of the work that all of you have done at EWEB to, you know, that we've done to maintain. And, I mean, it's really been, I can't imagine what it's like on the ground with all of you, you know, pulling together every single day when it seems like, okay, now there's a new shock, and a new shock, and a new shock. My heart goes out to everyone there who is feeling the stress of that and the, you know, it's just gone on for so long. We're coming up at a year here with that, and it's, we're definitely not out of the weeds. So it's still going to be a look at how are we continuing to adjust this? And then when we do, when are we able to kind of come back from all of this? And what does that process look like? So, thank you for that, and thank you for the upcoming work ahead to move us in a better direction and support the community members who've really been impacted in so many ways they didn't know were possible.
Thank you, Sonya.
Go ahead, John.
Thanks. Thank you for the presentation. Again, yeah, I think I echo what everybody else has said, but I also look at this as an opportunity. You know, we've been through a very tough time, but we can emerge out of it and grow from it and move on stronger. And with that, with that being said, I think that there's areas that we can look at to try and focus on. You know, when I was going through the packet, a couple of things jumped out at me. One of them was when I was looking at the workforce composition, you know, where we're at with women and minorities and those types of things in the workforce, and hopefully we can continue on to try and have the most diverse and strong workforce that we can going forward. I think that that's something to keep an eye on. And then another thing that just stuck out to me was when we talked about community involvement and the, you know, the eighteen million dollars that was spent on community involvement, you know, I went through the list of all the things in Appendix F that we did, you know, schools and helping with paying the bills and all the partnerships that we had. The one thing that I just, I had a tough time swallowing was that we put the Silt dollars into community involvement, you know? To me, Silt is, it's taxes, or it's rent, you know? And when I pay my property tax at home, I don't really put that as I'm doing my community involvement. You know, I know how the city of Eugene spends their Silt, because I've spent a lot of time on their budget committee. And so to mix that in with what all the other good things that we do, it just didn't kind of feel right to me. But that's just, that's just me personally, you know, because the other things have tangible, you know, we're helping schools, and we're helping people pay their bills. Well, giving the city money to put into their general fund to possibly help pay PERS for, you know, a public worker is that community involvement? Well, you can make a nexus, I suppose, but for me, it was, it was a tough reach to put that into that category. So that's just a comment on my side. I don't think we need to take it out. It's just, I see that as a different, a different thing. That's cost of business, not necessarily community involvement. But other than that, I was really happy with the presentation and all the things that the utility's done, and I just hope to build on it from this past year.
Thank you, Commissioner Borowski. I think that part of, there's a number of reasons that Silt historic, I'll just give you the historical background for why Silt has been included. There's been a couple of reasons. One is statutorily, the state of Oregon requires a three percent, and we pay a six percent to the city of Eugene. So, we do go above and beyond what would statutorily be typical for, say, rent of the right-of-way or for an in lieu of tax contribution, of which in many cases, we still maintain the right-of-way. And so, I think there's, there's certainly, it goes into the community. It can be considered direct or indirect, but there is some historic reasons why that was included in that number. I think there's enough good things going on around that, that we have a lot to be proud of as an organization, but that was at least part of the contribution to the community. And so, just to give you a little historical context, there's probably some other commissioners that, over time, can help you understand what our historical perspective has been on that as well. But, but I appreciate the comments.
Just want to echo what everyone else has said. I appreciated that presentation, and I, too, feel really proud to be associated with EWEB. I think that we do really good work, and so it's good to hear the state of the utility where you can highlight all of that good work. From a board perspective, thank goodness, this past year was pretty mundane, because it was enough just to pivot to figuring out how to do all of our stuff online remotely. So that was kind of a gift. But I also want to acknowledge that I know that there are probably a significant number of employees at EWEB who did not have a mundane year and have actually worked really, really hard, especially the folks who are working on the watershed recovery. I know that they've been pretty much working nonstop since the fire and have gone above and beyond. And I'm, again, really proud to be associated with all of that good work. So, looking forward to this next year, where we can do even more good work.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate all the comments. There is just a lot of work left to do. I don't think, I think it's, it's great that we have lots of opportunities in front of us, including those that Commissioner Borowski mentioned around diversity, and I would be, and I think inclusion is a really big piece of that as well. A lot of work left to do, and, yeah, there's, including for the past several weeks, we've had crews dealing with ice storms up in Portland. So, it's nice to be part of an industry that shares resources and helps each other out as well. So, I think we feel, I feel lucky to be part of the organization and appreciate the people and their work this year. So, thank you. I appreciate the comments.
Great. All right, we are now in the home stretch. Agenda item number eleven, correspondence, and that is you, Frank.
Thank you, President Schlossberg. We had three pieces of correspondence in this month's packet. I just guess I would open it up if there were any questions on those, just as a reminder. An update on our emergency response plan, which is part of the Water Infrastructure Act, was one of the updates. Some proposed updates to EWEB bylaws, of which we'll probably bring back in a consent calendar form, and then Jason Huzer and his state legislative update. And I would just entertain if there's any questions on those subjects, that we'd be happy to answer them, or get back to the board if we can't answer them online tonight. Just open it up and see if there's any questions. Commissioner Borowski?
Yeah, just one question on the Dogami legislation. It seemed like it was, it was from the correspondence that it was going somewhere, and then it's not going somewhere. Do you have any update as to, I mean, with this legislature, things are changing, you know, daily or weekly. I'm just wondering if there's any update, because I think that that's an important piece of our strategic plan.
Yeah, the guy who was closest to that, and I think was involved actually within the last week in that particular topic, is Jason Huzer. Commissioner Borowski, I don't know if you've met Jason Huzer directly. He's our person in Salem, everything governmental. He's our, and so, Jason, you want to respond to that?
Yeah. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. As far as Dogami, there was a real outpouring of support for Dogami when they were proposed to be axed. To be honest, it might be the best, the silver lining is it might be the best thing that ever happened to Dogami. So many people came out of the woodwork. And so, the Natural Resources Subcommittee of Ways and Means went so far as to issue almost kind of an unprecedented, we give up, don't testify anymore in support of Dogami, we get it, we're going to keep Dogami. Now, the question then becomes the funding piece, and that's many, that's a long-distance race for the session. The budget often doesn't get wrapped up till the, towards the late stage of the session. The one issue with Dogami is there have been complaints that, you know, their budget turns out to be volatile, and there have been cost overruns, and they've had to make budget adjustments. I, you know, the nature of Dogami is they get a lot of federal grants.
I, you know, the nature of Dogami is they get a lot of federal grants. They, it's very grant intensive. And as we all know, and E-Web can speak to this from firsthand experience, grants are a very unusual revenue source. And it can be unpredictable whether grants are granted or not. So, you know, in fairness to Dogami, it's not really their fault. They've been very good at getting federal money, but the federal grants are not a very predictable revenue source. So the legislature's trying to figure out, how can they build in some kind of predictability to mitigate the volatility of how grant awards are awarded or denied? So I feel good about it. Every retired geologist in the state of Oregon testified on that bill. So let's see if they got the point.
Thank you, Jason.
Great. Thank you very much for that update.
Any other questions on correspondence?
I'm not seeing any. Would you like to move on to future agenda planning?
I would. Let's move on to future agenda planning.
I know there were at least two subjects associated with this. One had to do with the format and potentially timing of the Upriver meeting. And the other one had to do with the potential timing or a request to bring up closer a discussion on wildfire mitigation. And so those are the two things that I've gotten feedback on. The Upriver Board meeting, I did provide a little bit of information in the General Managers' report as to some options. April is a challenging month to do anything outdoors or I shouldn't say, maybe plan anything outdoors. Sometimes it's beautiful and sometimes it's not. There are still some, like, we would still want to have some restrictions, but I don't know the board's comfort level in general at large, the board at large, whether you're comfortable with having an in-person Upriver Board meeting in April. And I think that's part of the discussion tonight.
Go ahead, Sonya. You're muted.
Sorry. Thank you. I'm willing to do something I'm personally not willing to do. And I think an in-person indoor event is not something that I'm personally willing to do. I would like to provide access to the people there, but I also am concerned that they don't have, that the internet and the stability there and the signals are not as robust as maybe they could be. Also, I'm not sure, especially with the continuing recovery, how this falls into the agenda for, you know, for them and what they're going to want to need. Now, I'm absolutely willing to be a part of an electronic sort of event. I do wonder if maybe it would be more prudent to hold it later in the year to give some more time to get through, you know, some of the other recovery efforts. But I don't know if you or staff on the ground are hearing a lot of want from the community to hold this event or to push it out, or maybe it's just not even something that's really on the radar there.
So I personally, Commissioner Carlson, am not hearing a clamoring for an event. But I also, I'll need to touch bases with staff that are a little bit closer and involved in that community directly to confirm what the interest level is. I know there's a lot of topics that are of interest to the community and interest of us to share. But I don't necessarily feel like there's a sense of urgency necessarily to do that. But that's my perspective and I'll need to confirm with staff what they're hearing. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I just comment, I'm okay with meeting, you know, whatever. But I also respect everybody else's desires. Do we even know if Upriver has internet service? A lot of my friends that lived up there say they still don't have, you know, it's like dial-up and they can't stream and they can't do those things with internet. So do we even know if we can have an audience that will encompass everybody that has kind of a stake in what our topics would be?
Potentially, Commissioner Brown. I think it's probably spotty. I've seen, it's something that we'll have to check on. There may be the opportunity to do something like was mentioned in the report, at a consolidated site where we could have some interactiveness with a small group up there with the commissioners potentially being in some format like this. So some maybe hybrid. Or we could simply say there's, the timing just isn't quite right. And we can look at another month or two where it would be more advantageous to do something even outdoors with proper spacing. So if the board has a sense of urgency to do something in April, we can continue that. I'll check with staff. But also maybe recognizing that it might be okay to do something that's a little bit more comfortable to the community and to us, but do it in May or maybe June, depending on the surrounding situation. Oh, I think we'll go Commissioner Barofsky, McCray, and Schlossberg in that order.
Thank you. For me, again, yeah, I'm willing to do whatever the board decides. Correct me if I'm wrong, but last year because of the fire, we didn't have an Upriver meeting. So it's been a year plus before, since we've made a presence up there. Not that we haven't been present, but that the board hasn't done an Upriver thing. I guess the only other thing that I would have trepidation about pushing it out further is we've got things that are directly relative to that community that are going to be coming up on the agenda. And it would be good for me to hear from the people that are living up there, you know, with, whether it's the Leeburg-Walterville or, you know, some of the fire mitigation type things that we're going to be coming up on in the next few months. If we push it up till the summer, are we going to be making those decisions without really getting the input from the people that are living up there? That's my concern.
Thank you. Commissioner McCray?
I'll try and be quick. I don't have, it is important to me that we have an Upriver meeting, particularly for the reasons that Commissioner Barofsky just mentioned. Really important that we get feedback from folks up river before making decisions on how we manage those assets. It's not, I don't have a sense of urgency about getting up there in April. All things being equal, I just assume do something outside if that's possible. And if June makes that work, that makes all kinds of sense to me. Yeah, I do think it's important that we get up river. But I don't see April as being, unless I'm missing something, I don't see April as being essential to that. I think June would work. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner McCray. I think the reason that we had traditionally settled on something in April was it's typically early April when we get our snowpack forecast and we can start to make some predictions around flow management, especially with, and communicate when our scheduled outages are for the canals. Now, one of them's out permanently. And if we're going to go into a special low-water flow management process for Walterville, so we would typically know what that is in early April. So we just thought, well, it's good timing for late April. Without that, though, there's, we can still communicate that. There's a lot of other channels that we're using. Newsletters, neighborhood sites, the Blue River Bulletin. I mean, there's all kinds of ways that we can communicate certain things. But that was traditionally why we had moved it to April from the fall originally. President Schlossberg? And President Schlossberg? And then I think Commissioner Carlson had another comment. And then we can move on to the second agenda item that we wanted to discuss. I'd like to keep us a little bit close to being on time.
Yeah. I just want to say that I think that it would be advantageous to have an in-person meeting there outdoors, just given the challenges with internet. And I think, I agree that we should wait until June. We're so close to having full vaccination for everybody that wants it. And I would hate to push it or to put people in an uncomfortable position of coming to the meeting if they didn't feel totally comfortable. But that was the only option. And then I just want to make sure that we communicate enough with the community up there so that they know exactly what we're going to be talking about when it comes to Walterville and Leeburg because that really is going to affect them. And I don't want us to spring something on them and then have to make a decision very close to the meeting that we have with them.
Thank you. Commissioner Carlson?
Two quick things. I know we did end up moving our meeting to April as well because we wanted to do a follow-up on the major storm that we had. So we'd typically done it in September. We did move it not just for the watershed issue, but also because it seemed to be prudent to have that information right on the heels of this major disaster that was up there. So I, in that context too, I would agree that it would be beneficial to have kind of a follow-up now that there's, you know, potentially some other information that we can provide to community members. And if going into the summertime, especially with the watershed restoration work, I know that there was some trepidation around some homeowners and in having us come in and help provide, you know, services to them around restoring the watershed. Potentially, there could be some benefits there. So I do think it would be beneficial to have it not in September, to have it earlier than that to potentially help move some of that work along. But I do think that it would be beneficial as well to have it outdoors. I know it's tricky in April. I also think that there's, you know, on the other side of that, the vaccinations, from all the information I'm now seeing, they're saying that everybody over 16 would be, would have access to them by July 1st. So again, you know, it's anybody's guess, golden, you know, the crystal ball in whether or not people will actually have access to that. But it might be beneficial to have that out there as well so that everybody who wants one can and can participate. But if we decide to do it before then, I'm willing to sit in a very far corner of a outdoor space.
Thanks. Thank you, Commissioners. I do believe I have enough to go on. It sounds like there's sort of a sense of, as soon as practical, outdoor being the preference before summer, which is probably a preference because of things like wildfire discussions, not waiting till the fall, and then communicating very specifically around, here's the topics, here's the concerns, and doing a lot of outreach and communications around the meeting. So I'll just take that as the takeaways in general. Commissioner Carlson?
Sorry, one last little quick point. I do know that typically we have lots of PowerPoint presentations that we do at these sorts of meetings. Obviously, that gets a lot more challenging in an outdoor setting. If there's some way we can do, you know, still have that same kind of sense and provide that information. But I know that that definitely provides some logistical challenges for staff. Maybe we could rent the City of Eugene's, they used to have those big screens that they would do in the park. Maybe we could rent something like that so we could still have the PowerPoint presentations because I think they're very effective at helping convey information that's useful to the community.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll try to explore all of the various technical options to get information communicated. The other one, the other request I received was to pull up the wildfire discussion from June. That came from Commissioner McCray. And I just understand the logic of it. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, but your thought was if the board needs to make decisions prior to the fire season, that you felt June was a little bit too late to properly assess that? And so something sooner would make more sense. I had, we had scheduled, I'll say, two different sessions. One was more of a, here's where we are. And then the other one was some advanced plan going forward. I had intentionally put off the first portion of that because we still do not have a, any kind of a determination or legal determination from the department, from the US government regarding the cause of the existing, or the existing, hope it's not still existing, the previous Holiday Farm Fire. So, but we can still have a discussion. We will have to be, it will be based on industry practice and our plans going forward. And so I think, you know, with a lot of, without a lot of discussion from the other members, I think it does make sense to pull that up some. I'll have to look and see how much of it is a discussion of, here's what we have versus here's where we're going and try to do something at least before June. So maybe May or April, depending on the topics, the specifics of where we stand on those plans. Is that acceptable to you?
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. President Schlossberg?
I know we have bookmarked, like, some times for work sessions. And I'm wondering if that would be something that we could cover in a work session? Just the kind of the background information on it if our agendas are pretty tight in May?
It's a potential, certainly. One of those sessions was the April Tuesday where we were going to do an Upriver meeting. I think now that's going to be changed a little bit. I would like to take one of the work sessions and talk about where I see the electric sector relative to decarbonization and some of the things that this board is hearing around renewables and where I see the opportunities going forward for that. So that might be one of the work sessions. I don't think we have a work session that we would, or the topics to have a work session this month in March. I'm not quite prepared for that. But I think it's an option. If it's purely informational discussion with no action, then we know we have those kind of earmarked, I guess I would say, for the third Tuesday of the month. So I'll take a look at the schedule and granting Commissioner McCray's request to accelerate that and see where it probably best fits with where staff is at and what information we think we could provide and, you know, make a good information. And I think that was all I had on, unless someone else had anything on future agendas.
Sonya?
I haven't seen very much about the upcoming Legislative Advocacy Day. And I'm just curious. It says it's still happening next week. Just wanted to flag that.
Mr. Huser?
I'll have a, I've got four appointments scheduled and two are on standby. I expect to know in the next 48 hours. And look for the full schedule, hopefully by Thursday. And I'm working on some bulleted talking points on our key issues. So I'll have Ann get that stuff to you and let me know what else anyone thinks they might need in preparation.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not sure how much of it I can attend. But once I see the schedule and talking points, we'll see what we can fit in. So, thanks.
The nice thing is there's no driving involved. So if you squeeze in one appointment, that'd be better than nothing. So please join us as you can.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jason. I think we're done with this part of the agenda. President Schlossberg, I think we'll pass the baton back to you.
All right. Last but not least, board wrap-up. Who wants to go first? Okay, Matt?
That was a tough sell. I would like to propose that we get an agenda item to address carbon targets for the electric side. This is, I think, what Frank was just addressing. It seems like it's important that we have some, if we, as a board, decide we want to set some targets around the carbon intensity of the electricity that's being provided to E-Web customers, it feels like it would be important to have those set in place before any negotiations on new contracts are coming up. So it feels like we'd want to have something by the end of the calendar year. And it feels like there's probably at least a conversation or two. at least a conversation or two, to get us all on the same page on what that would mean, and whether and how we want to engage in establishing targets. But there was some discussion today, you know, from folks that came forward and, in speaking with other Commissioners, it sounds like there's openness to have this kind of conversation. So I'd like to get something put on the calendar. You know, we don't have to set a date right now, but perhaps next month, we could entertain some dates for that.
Just a comment, Commissioner McCray. I'll have to do some checking, but it, it, it still will be a number of years before we have any kind of substantial contract decision to make. I would potentially like to propose a slight modification to your request, and that's that we work together as a Board and, and Staff toward a set of, I'll say, resource principles, especially electric generation principles. It could include carbon intensity, but there's a number of, of other things that I think are important to, to include in that discussion. And so maybe a discussion more around the principles of which these, these future decisions would be made, if, if that seems like it's acceptable.
Yeah, sir. I mean, I think however we want to frame it, and, you know, I guess the devil's in the details there in terms of what principles look like. I agree, there are other facets of our electric resources that we want to talk about besides just carbon intensity. So I think a broader set of principles or goals would be useful.
Thank you.
Mindy, before we go on, I've got a procedural question, because historically, before we've put anything on the agenda or done anything, and Matt, I'd want to have this discussion, but procedurally, we've always had, so one person can't, you know, if every one of five of us went out with a one agenda topic, we'd have a challenge. And we've always said, can I get three head nods? So we had a majority. And I, I know that how that vote's going to go, but I think just procedurally, so you guys would understand that that's what we've done in the past. That doesn't mean we'd have to do it in the future. But it was just something that would give more direction to staff to make sure this isn't a one phony show, that this is, you know, a majority of the Board wanting to go there.
Yeah, thank you for keeping this honest on that one, John. Much appreciated.
I just, you know, I just, I know we're going to have a good conversation. I just want to make sure that, you know, I, I can count the heads, you know, that's, that doesn't matter. It's just a procedure thing to make sure for the rest of the staff knows.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, John. Okay. Anyone else have anything they want to wrap up?
I've got one last item, kind of along John Barofsky's comments about Silt. That's been one of my unfavorite topics of the last decade or two. And I agree that it's kind of a mislabeled thing, but I also agree that I know that the city's looking for money for their climate recovery ordinance. They don't have it. But, you know, we give them 1.2 to 1.4 million dollars a month that comes out of electric generation. And I would hope that they could take some of that money. And, you know, and you heard Frank say that next year, we're going to probably have to raise rates, which we haven't done. That's a windfall for them, because every time we raise rates, they get money. They get a lot more money. Because I know that the city managers yelled at me for years when we weren't raising rates, saying we're killing our budget. And I would hope that you guys that are having the conversations with city staff could say, you know, we're going to raise rates one or 2%, and you're going to have a $400,000 windfall. Why don't you take some of that for the CRO2, or some electrification, or use some of that money, because it's generated by utilities, and it's, you know, and kind of give that direction, rather than just have it go into the general fund, and like John said, pay for who knows what. You know, I'm just, just a food for thought that maybe we could have that discussion in the future. At least encourage them to do that. So that's all I've got.
Great. Anyone else? All right. Well, props to Ann for producing tonight's meeting, and for keeping the timer up there. She wasn't sure she was going to be able to do that, but it all went super smoothly. So thank you, Ann. And at 8:05, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Mindy.